Okay, good evening. I would like to call the February 20th, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any announcements. Is there anybody here for anything that's not on our agenda this evening? Seeing as no, we'll move right into the poll petition hearing, number 25631463 for Burt Street, Elm Street, South Street, Southwest Main Street, and U Street.
If you look at the memo that I gave you, I wrote, basically what I did was I took each section and put it into that memo for you to read, to make it easier.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this poll petition is for five different locations. Of others have been notified and there are no concerns or recommendations from the reviewing Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. request permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures. As said, companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public way or ways. On Burt Street, they're going to install a pole, a down guy and an anchor with an eight-foot lead across from Pole Nine. Burt Street, pole and anchor will be located on town property. On the west side of Burt Street, pole will be labeled 9-84. On Elm Street, they'll install a pole, down guy and anchor with eight-foot lead across from Pole Six. Elm Street, pole and anchor will be located on town property. On the west side of Elm Street, and the pole will be labeled 6-84. South Street, a pole, down guy and anchor with an eight-foot lead across from Pole 68-50. South Street, pole and anchor will be located on town property to the east side of South Street, and the pole will be labeled 68-50S. My goodness. Southwest Main, again, a pole, a down guy and an anchor with an eight-foot lead across from Pole 55-1. On Lindbergh Ave, pole and anchor is on town property, and on the west side of Lindbergh Avenue, pole will be labeled 55-1S. And on U Street, a pole, a down guy and an anchor with a six-foot lead across from Pole 39. U Street, pole and anchor will be located on town property on the south side of U Street, and the pole will be labeled 39-84.
Keep going.
And keep going.
Wherefore they pray after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted joint or identical locations for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England Inc. Plan number 25631463 dated 1/17/18 for Burt Street, 1/22/18 for Elm Street, 1/19/18 for South Street, 1/18/18 for Southwest Main Street, and 1/19/18 for U Street. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires the above intersecting public ways for the purposes of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioners agree to reserve space for one cross arm at a suitable point of each said poles for the fire, police, telephone and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used by it exclusively for municipal purposes.
I would like to say also that at the time of putting the agenda together, there were no, there were no, there were no, oh my god, my head, concerns about the poll petition. However, this morning I did have, not a concern, but a notice from the conservation agent saying that Burt Street was in a wetland. But, he said that the, he did talk to the RDA, and they did, or they did file for an RDI with the commission, so everything's all set there. I also learned from the fire, ah, fire, or the highway superintendent, that there is a resident from Lindbergh Street that does have a concern, and he's probably here. And Mike Fraser is here from National Grid.
Okay. Why don't you guys, oh, come on up. Oh, I need a motion.
I moved out of the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Tim.
He beat me.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, I forgot that key part.
No, that's all right.
Well, we used to.
I just reading it. You don't really have to do it. I didn't want to correct him though.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Can I ask for your name?
Sure, my name is James Bates.
Thank you.
I'm here with my wife, Kim, who sent me as the spokesperson.
All right, and this is the only one that has concerns from a resident, right?
The only one that I've heard of, and the only one that's here.
All right, so why don't we address that one first?
Okay. Shall I?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So, we live at 311 Southwest Main Street, which intersects Lindbergh Ave. Our property is bounded by Lindbergh Ave on one side and Southwest Main Street on the other. And Lindbergh, this is listed, it says that it's a public way, and Lindbergh Ave is not a public way, it's a private way. It's not listed on the town's list of, it's actually listed as a private way on the town's list. So, that's actually an incorrect statement. So, a private way, I believe, has some different designations than a, than a public way as far as town property. And more importantly, the two main reasons for us, that area where the new pole would go and the guy wire would go is kind of an overflow parking area. It's the only spot along that stretch of Southwest Main Street and Lindbergh Ave where cars can actually pull off the road. It's kind of a dangerous spot on both roads right there. So, you can actually pull a car off, and we do use that area for overflow parking. So, that's a potential problem there. And I believe that if there's a pole directly across from the existing pole to be used as a support, the road will be quite narrow there as well, which would make it difficult for cars to pass on Lindbergh Ave, which again is a private way, so it may not be an issue for the town, but it's a fairly tight road anyway. It's just a small dirt path really through the woods, so. And there are quite a few year-round residents on that street now as well that travel on that road. So, those are our concerns really for having that pole be on, that would put two poles on either side of the road, right there. So, I just wondered if there's another, another option for possibly, I would assume that the reason for the support requirement is because of the corner that the lines take at that spot. And I'm wondering if it's possible to move the pole on Southwest Main Street and align it in a straight line rather than have to support that.
I can definitely have them look at that, and if it's a private way, then, need rights anyway, so. Yeah, I can have them look at other options, either a push brace or lining up this pole so it's straight, or moving this pole like you said, so.
Right.
Yeah, I'll take that back to them.
Okay, that's it. That works?
Yep.
So, we're placing that one on hold?
We're going to place that one on hold.
Okay. And then they notify the people in the neighborhood again as to the results of the...
Oh, it's a private way, I think we'll have to do, it would be an easement, so however the, I think it'll be everyone, so.
Okay. Do you know how that would work, Bill?
Well, I'm not sure that the selectman would have a role on a private way.
Right.
You know, Lindbergh Ave is in fact a private way, and all of those poles, I believe, on this petition are in the private way.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Bill's correct. That would be purely a matter between the owner of the private property and the utility company, so there's a chance this may never appear back in front of you again.
Works for me.
Yes, very efficient.
Well, to the extent that we want an amicable solution, I hope it will, at least we've made aware of what, what the end result was. My question is more, all right, so there was an oversight that this was a private way. If this gentleman didn't show up, we'd take things at face value and approve it, right? Does that, if this were to happen, would, would that have exposed the town in any way? And, yeah.
Oh, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to select and boner. I don't believe it would. As Selectman Davis just mentioned, it just means that your vote wouldn't have had any legal effect. The utility company would still be responsible for doing its due diligence and for getting the agreement to the property owner.
Okay. Very good.
Could I just ask, is there a problem with the poles as they are now? It's a new pole, it seems like there's no issue. I don't think there's been any damage or lines down as a result of that corner the way it is now. I know there's a guy wire going into a tree that's on our property currently, and I don't know if you're trying to eliminate.
Yeah.
But that's...
Doing maintenance on the whole feeder, so.
Oh, so the objective is to get lines out of guy wires out of trees?
Yeah, we don't do tree guys anymore, so.
Okay. All right.
What did you say about tree guys?
We don't put in new ones anymore, so, we try to, if we see them, we try to get rid of them.
Not, um...
Just one property owner you're going to have to deal with? Is this on your property?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, we'll figure out what the, everyone is, if it's just you, or, I don't know.
Sounds like you hold the cards.
Yeah, I guess.
I'll be right away, though, I'll hover look at it.
It'll be fine as long as the tree continues to stand, I guess, the guy wire that's there, so. Okay, perfect.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Glad it worked out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
So, just a bit. Want to place that? Actually, we just dismissed that poll.
You just won't act on that one.
Won't act on it all.
Yeah, we give a motion.
But you have the other ones to still act on.
So, do I hear a motion to approve the...
No.
No.
We're going to have to close the public hearing before we...
Do you hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, I'm not sure if the gentleman, National Grid, has anything to add before we close the public hearing.
Do you want me to read everything again?
No.
No. Just, just for maintenance on the, on the feeder, whether it's, you know, just adding guy where needed, or eliminating tree guys, you know, replacing cross arms along the whole thing.
Mr. Hughes likes explanations.
No, I just like to... All right, now I move, then we close the public hearing.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bless you.
I decided to decide the public hearing route.
I think she made it inside.
Does anyone care to venture a motion on the petitions barring the one that we are excluding this evening?
So, move.
Second.
Made by Hal, seconded by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and I am going to jockey around the agenda tonight at the request of fellow
selectmen. I'm going to move down to item number seven, which is distribution of department hedge requests discussion.
Mr. Chairman, before the board leaves tonight, I'll distribute to you the school department budget, which is a 19-page Excel document that I only have in hard copy. And the board should expect some point in the mid-morning tomorrow, electronic copy of our budget request from our department heads. I have one last schedule that I just received late this afternoon from the finance director explaining a process for us to arrive at a conversation about the schools. I have to incorporate that so that the model is fully functional. But I'm prepared to brief everyone and set your expectations of where we are and how we got here. The exercise has been to get the department heads to be as thoughtful and as forward-looking as possible about their operations, not only for the coming year, but for the next five years, so they demonstrate a responsible plan for delivering service at nothing less than level service delivery for the next five years. The outcome of that conversation is necessarily going to be a budget request that is, for some, undisciplined, because it's not coming through the administrator's office and being whittled there. It's coming out into public for a conversation about where it is as a request. It's my personal bias that I'm not elected, the finance director's not elected, we shouldn't be making policy choices. That is the realm of the Board of Selectmen, it is your sole responsibility. Our responsibility is to give you the best information we can, the best analysis we can, recommendations that you could accept or reject, but at least get you to a target. But the final decision relies with, lies with you. And then we implement anything that you and town meeting set into motion. So, the request, as it stands now, is in deficit compared to our revenue outlook. It's about a $688,000 deficit. Of that, $450,000, really, more than that, when you take into consideration the school transportation, it's close to $612,000 of that deficit, is more or less directly generated from the school department's requesting budget. There are things we can do within our request that because they represent new initiatives, we could just simply not do it, and keep the town's side of the budget rate of growth within the rate of growth of revenues of the town. But there's absolutely no way we can absorb this level of spending from the school department on our side and still be able to deliver services. The same services that exist today couldn't possibly exist after July 1st if this request isn't pared back in some way and worked with in some way. So, that's what you're going to see. And you'll have the ability to, because it'll be right there on one screen of the Excel spreadsheet, change all the variables you want to change and see where it takes us. So, that's really kind of where we are. What is driving growth in the request is the fire department, or really ambulance, requested that the town add a medic each, each year for the next five years to staff up. That in, by itself, along with COLA and STEPS, because I budgeted in STEPS, knowing full well that that is a can of worms, so to speak. Some people are eligible for STEPS, some are not. But STEPS were held in abeyance in the past. The model's fully flexible, so you can turn them on any year you want, you see the impact. The bottom line is, it's really not material. It accumulates over time, there's a compounding effect over the course of five years. But in terms, will it make or break your town budget to give STEPS or COLA on the town side? No. That's not what this is about. These are six-digit problems, and the problems are pension contribution, the health insurance Blackstone Valley Tech has come in with an estimated increase in the assessment of $260,000. So, that alone is more than anything I could save on the town side. And then the school and school transportation increases. The school transportation is a very large increase of, font isn't possibly small, but about $161, call it $162,000, increase in the cost of school transportation.
But just those two items constitute almost half the deficit.
Two items being BBT and transportation.
Transportation. And this budget doesn't include any capital entries, this is just operational...
At the moment, we do not have any capital built into this conversation. The capital improvement committee begins meeting this week and will meet in successive weeks, over the next three weeks, to get a final capital budget. In the past, and for a steady, long time, the impact of this conversation has been masked a little bit by the use of free cash to cover operating expenses, half a million, $600,000. But running deficits of this size means your drawdown on free cash would be almost complete, you couldn't count on that resource for the following year. So, the exercise, the frightening thing about the exercise is, we're talking about one year at $688,000, but it mushrooms the following year, whether you use free cash or not, it mushrooms well over a million.
Over five.
Probably closer to one and a half million, at least, if you assume that the trends that are in place around school spending, Blackstone Valley Tech and school transportation continue, but not even at the same pace as they occurred this year. The degree of bad news this year is absolutely extraordinary. I mean, to have BBT go up by 260, transportation go up by over 30%, dwarfs the 3.5% increase requested by your school department. But it's such a large budget that 3.5% for the foreseeable future in five years just blows the doors off. By the end of five years, you're well over $4 million in the red before you even start the budget process. So, clearly, there's a call for action and an adjustment of service expectations, school spending expectations. And frankly, even our ability as a town to continue to participate in the agreements we've been partying to for a long time, has to be on the table. Lastly, I don't, I'd be very cautious in my comments not being taken out of context, but when we enter collective bargaining agreements with our major units, we have to be fiscally disciplined. We have to know ahead of time what resources we have, so it's not just a matter of thinking that you're doing the fair thing, or thinking you're going to do something that you can sell, or thinking you can do something that might compare favorably to other communities, or at least keep pace with other communities. Those are valid concerns and considerations. But at the end of the day, you need to make an agreement that's binding upon the town that the town can actually afford to pay. And I'm not convinced, because I, the reason why I want to distribute the detail to members of the board and want it to be available to everyone is that a lot of what's driving the increase here is a result of collective bargaining. So, frankly, to the extent that we had any surplus that we could push over to the school side so they can continue to be more competitive as, as an entity, they soaked it up with the collective bargaining agreement. There's no escaping the math. I think we've all known, I think every one of you has known this for a long time, that this, pieces are moving in this direction. All I've tried to do now is, it's, I think it's the first step towards actually having a healthy conclusion of this conversation, is getting it based on objective facts. We might tweak the model here and there, but we're certainly not going to be off by much more than a percentage point. The issue now is, you know, how can we work together to find solutions to get the numbers to come into balance? That's the only task that's left for us to do.
So, long story short, Matt, is that based off of the current forecast that you have sitting in front of us, what we all set around the table and discussed last year, of services are more than likely going to disappear this year, because we just can't operate at this turn rate any longer. So, the cliff that we've all, in theory, been hearing about for years is finally, we're here. I think that's the long and the short of it. So, and I mean, I appreciate all the work that you did on the budget, and I like the fact that you're saying that, you know, it is the responsibility of this board to do the fiscally responsible thing, even if it's not the popular thing, and do what it is so that way we have a viable community. And if it means that we're without certain services, or reducing funding to other services, then that's what we have to do, that's what we were elected to do. So, I think the next few meetings that we have aren't going to be fun ones, you know, and we all have some tough decisions that need to be made.
Where's the finance committee? Have they, when do you meet with them next? I imagine this is all hot off the press, so.
Exactly. So, the same information will be distributed to FinCom a week from tonight. I'll probably, because of the meeting schedule, they'll have more time to absorb what I'm putting out. They'll have a full week to think about what's going to be discussed next Tuesday.
When, once you get the formula is out, I think all of us will have a chance to really start crafting some models and ideas, and this will definitely be an agenda item on our follow-up meetings. As we get closer and closer towards town meeting, we need to have something that at least this board collectively agrees on to propose into the town. And it may be drastically different than FinCom's, rest, you know, recommendations, I honestly don't know, but, you know, it's kind of hell-bent, I want to do what's right, not what's popular.
With that being said, I don't think this comes as a surprise to anybody sitting at this table.
No.
You know, we sort of saw this coming with the work that we did with the Strategic Budget Committee. And, yeah, I'd be interested to see your model and the numbers, but we knew that this was not sustainable.
Well, we had these conversations last year, and...
Yeah.
Said if things don't improve, then things are going to change.
Well, I think what we did is made the decision to kick the can down the road for another year.
We're out of road.
Uh-huh. And knowing full well that we probably weren't going to have that opportunity to do it again this year.
What, coming out of Boston, revenues projected in the budget are based off of the House budget?
Off of H1.
H1. And I must say, I haven't been paying too close attention as to what they're viewing as, you know, revenues for the Commonwealth, or what their budget's looking like, but I imagine there is a whole ton of additional state aid coming our way.
No, and I think the only thing that responsible parties can do is assume that state aid is going to be pretty flat to the town of Douglas for the next five years. It's been flattening off. This year is only a very modest increase in the gross, but once you net out all the assessments and all the offsets, it's actually a negative number, so.
We will have some tough discussions ahead, I just would like to be a little proactive, and I know we've done it already, but we really need to sound the alarm on the pilot monies. Again, that's not going to fix the problem by any stretch, but from a fairness issue, you know, it's simply not sustainable to maintain the expectations of Boston and their mandates. You mentioned, you know, contractually and OPEB and pension benefits. Even if we wanted to change that, it's mandated in state law, there's just nothing we can do. So, I would certainly like to keep that fight, certainly talk to our lawmakers, but we should sound the alarm with them yet again.
Well, I think it's that, and ultimately, we have a revenue problem. I mean, if you really get right down to it, so the town's services and things are growing beyond what, you know, 2.5% increases on property tax are going to allow you to do. The difference between us and the other towns and, you know, surrounding us, is that they passed an override to try and keep up with some of the way that these things are going. You know, we've already seen that the town doesn't have an appetite to do that. So, we need to look at new ways to bring revenue into the town of Douglas. So, and I mean, if it's, again, one of the unpopular things, if it's recreational marijuana says that, hey, we'll get you another million and a half dollars a year in revenue, okay, I'm all ears. So, it may not be popular, but if it means that we can level our services and we can keep our district intact, and we can keep up with spending, then, you know, that's what we do. But we need to be willing to look at, explore every single opportunity that comes in front of this board that may generate revenue for us, and kind of put personal feelings on everything aside.
To steal my own thunder from my report later on, pilot did go down. It is at the lowest level historically in the last 10 years.
The message isn't being heard.
So...
No, clearly.
The town, and I can send you the copy of the letter, I penned off a letter to Rep. McKenna who asked for it, and went through, in one page, fairly succinctly, what the issues are. That letter got passed on to Chairman Sanchez of the Finance Committee, along with Rep. McKenna's own testimony. So, the word has already been put out there on behalf of Douglas that this pilot formula this year, however they arrived at it, doesn't seem to be generating a fair result. They actually have more land in Douglas than they had the last time they did this, and how they arrived at a decreasing... And how they arrived at a decreasing pilot is magical mystery math.
They seem to favor watershed communities.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt. Well, they're making money from that. Well, maybe, you know, in a couple of months, we look at how we service the state park. It raises stake in some way, shape, or form. But there's a fundamental fairness issue here that has gone unnoticed or unanswered for a while. Good report, Matt. You've painted a very clear picture as to what we're up against.
There's no denying it this year.
You're saving it for Halloween.
Well, I just, it's my sincerest hope that I don't hear anybody act surprised. So, because I don't think that that would be warmly welcomed by me. So let's go to item number two. If there's nothing else to talk about on this, if you have.
I would, and I don't necessarily support it. I think the discussion at some point will be asked as to whether we had looked at an override and whether there was any interest or stomach from this board for it. I think I know where I stand, but it's probably helpful to Matt to remind the Finance Committee, you know, where this board might be on that.
Personally, I, like I said, my personal feelings decide. If it's the will of the town and we get petitioned by residents saying that we're willing to do a two and a half override, I'll support it wholeheartedly. But am I going to stand up at town meeting and propose one? Absolutely not.
Well, it's during the process, but discussion would be had on another town meeting, but.
You know, I think the message has been clear the last two times we've attempted this. And I don't think it's going to change.
And I'd have a.
So regardless of whether we, you know, proposed and supported it or not, I think it's going to make a damn bit of difference.
Unless it's like a petition coming from the community itself, even if another board proposed it, I wouldn't support it.
No, I just, it's not going to happen.
I think the town's, the message of the people has been clear to us. In the past, we've taken the position that we'll support it, you know, if the people want to vote it in. But I think at this point, we'd all have to be tone deaf not to hear the message we've gotten from the town. And there is no appetite for an override at this point. You know, taking Kevin's point, if there were a sudden rush of influx of people to us saying, let's do an override, I think we'd all listen to it as we would listen to any rush of public opinion on any subject at all. But nobody would be more surprised than me if that happened. I don't think that's in the cards.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent, David.
It would have to be a grassroots thing, right?
With more than twenty-five people in a room.
Yeah. You know, I think what you, you know, if a particular service is going to be impacted, I think you tend to hear from those people that have an interest in that particular service.
You know what you did do though, because you said override.
But that's not like, you know, by any stretch of the imagination, a mandate to sort of, for us to propose and expect it to be supported.
As I've seen, if the override buys time, it does not change the fundamental economics of the town. It buys us time and it puts off disaster for X amount of years, depending on how the override is structured. But given the picture that Matt painted, I think that's doubly true at this point. I don't think it's a solution, it's a band-aid.
I think it's, it can be. It depends on how they deal with it. If they use the override to buy them time to straighten their budgeting process out and, you know, try and level some of the factors that contributed into getting into the position that you're in in the first place, it can make sense and parlay you into a good spot. You know, when I grew up in Medway, Hawkington had done a two and a half override. And I believe that they actually proposed giving money back a couple of years ago. And they did it specifically to buy some time so they could get some, you know, capital initiatives done. You know, and then in comes EMC and the rest, as they say, is history. So, I mean, it depends. Anything that you do, when you're putting more money into your budget, you know, if you don't change your spending habits or adjust the way that you're doing your budgeting, then yeah, you're kicking the can down the road again, but you've raised taxes in the interim.
If you were to do it, you would do it. The idea of having to math that up so you actually solve the problem, and that's a massive number.
I was going to say, that amount of money is so huge.
It's not a theoretical conversation, so when the city of One Socket went bankrupt, our supplemental tax bill was a twenty-five percent bill. And that's the kind, we're not there yet, we haven't bounced payroll yet, but we won't. We won't let that happen. But it's, I think corrective action, and that's kind of what the five-year projection helps you finally visualize. The corrective action is whatever that big wave is, you've been able to forestall for a couple of budget seasons. As it accrues in the future, what's that number? So how much would you have to charge in an override to make up the 1.92 million dollar rolling wave? It's a very large number.
Probably more than twice that.
I can say I don't want to do is go backwards in some of these areas. You know, like, we just put these huge initiatives on rebuilding a fire department and getting it 24 hours. One of the last things I'd be willing to see is roll that back to part-time again. So, because I just think that that's, whatever cuts that we need to make, need to be intelligent cuts and thoughtful, I think. And still with the overlying idea that we need to still provide a certain level of service to the community on the educational side, plus with public safety and the other things. So, but I was scared last year when I said free cash wasn't the answer. So, anyway, I don't want to talk about it anymore. It's just.
Because we do own it, and I know we only meet on every other Tuesday, if you think it's necessary that we have these discussions during the budget process, I would be willing to free myself up additionally.
Absolutely.
Same here. Would it make?
That's always been the case, this board's been willing to do that.
Do you think it would make sense that between now and town meeting, we increase our frequency of meetings?
I think we should wait to. Yeah, I'd like to see what we're dealing with for us and.
I think when Matt sends his final thing out, I think we're going to know pretty quick what we're dealing with. And I think that we do need to act relatively quickly to try and get things in place and also try and rally some support or at least be aligned with FinCom on a certain level.
I think so. You know, I think we need to be prepared. Even though you say, you know, people are surprised and I don't want to hear it, there's going to be that surprise and shock that we're going to have to deal with as well.
And I think the earlier we get the word out, the better. To avoid any, you know, the discussion can go on that much longer. And I don't want anyone to say that they didn't have time to fully consider the options. We want to be able to lay the, any options that we have on the table as quickly as we can.
So you want to pause until the next selectman's meeting to determine if we change frequency?
When is our next meeting?
March fourth, is it? Yeah, I think that's sort of between now and then, it's only a.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, actually, it's only two weeks.
The sixth, March sixth.
But that gives us, you know, the month of March.
All right.
It'll be March sixth, yeah.
To really sort of dig into this, you know, we can have a general discussion the next time we meet and then sort of figure out what our strategy is from there.
I like it. Are you okay with that, Matt?
Yes, sir.
More late nights for you?
That's fine.
All right. Okay, now we need to move on to item two.
Is it okay, Tim?
Yeah, please, I'm glad to be a part of that.
All right. So it is to open the warrant for the annual slash special town meeting for May seventh, 2018, and close the warrant for May second, annual and special town meeting on March second, 2018.
Oh, wait a minute.
That should have said nay.
Yes. No, it should be, they should both be the same date, not the one, the second one, the seven.
What'd you do to me here, Suzanne?
I'm sorry.
So which date is it?
I'm getting sick. I'm trying, I've been fighting a cold.
Matt, this is to be reflected in.
It's, uh, seven.
Two and sevens look a lot alike.
And March and May begins in.
Try it.
So all the dates, all the dates are May seventh?
They both should be May seventh.
May seventh.
She liked the movie.
All right, so we're going to be opening May seventh and closing for May seventh.
Yes.
Okay, and we need votes.
Still moved.
But I'm sorry.
No buts.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You need to also say that you're closing it on March second, 2018.
I did say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I rule her out of order yet?
Tell John I'm getting sick.
Can that happen?
You can't rule her anything negative now. We can help us with her. We rely on Suzanne.
It's all right, Suzanne, you can do whatever you want to do.
Thank you.
So is the motion correct?
Motion is correct.
Okay.
All right, so moved. I will second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Suzanne. I'm sorry that you're under the weather.
Gene's worse than I am.
You're not getting, you're not getting invited to the table if you say Gene.
He's sicker than I am.
You won't hear her from.
This is the quietest meeting on Earth since.
Uh, the streetlights retrofit documents.
Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing, Bill?
Hi, Bill.
In your packet, I had distributed a memo through Suzanne.
Hopefully it's right.
Take one and distribute it. I am once again replacing the table that was in the memo.
Go on you.
Yeah. The long and short of it is, as you all know, we have been recently designated a green community. And as part of a green community, they have awarded us what's called a designation grant of just over a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That hundred and forty-five thousand dollars can be utilized for green initiatives. One of the things that Matt and I were discussing was a streetlight retrofit program because we can also capitalize on another funding source to implement that from MAPC, Mass Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. They have a separate source of funding also from the DOER.
Even though we're not in their district?
Even though we're not in their district. They're designated throughout the state to implement that. So, so we started looking at the program and we found out that we have a total of four hundred and fourteen streetlights. Currently, we fall within what's called an S1 tariff. That means National Grid owns the equipment, the actual light fixtures and any kind of lighting equipment, the poles. And looking, we are looking to become what's called an S5 tariff, which means we would own the actual lights and the poles. And with that, we would own the responsibility of maintaining those. So once the prices, you know, once I walk you through the prices, I think they'll bear out that it might make financial sense to do this. So looking at our billed kilowatt hours in the table in the memo, this table is accurate. This gives you a comparison between the S1 rate, the S5 rate with our existing fixtures. So if we purchased the existing fluorescent light bulbs, we would, we would just basically not pay for the equipment for LED, basically replacing what's out there with LED. The third column, the S5 rate with LED fixtures. So the goal there is having improved quality of light, paying less for electric utilities, that sort of thing. So in the first column, you'll see billed kilowatt hours for the S1 and S5 are the same, but when we add the LED, we reduce by over a hundred thousand dollars per year. I'm sorry, kilowatt hours per year. I break it out with delivery costs, facility charge, third-party maintenance charge, and supply charge. So all of these things are within all of our utility bills as I listed them. As I said, we're paying what's listed in the first column, which totals sixty-two thousand dollars. If we just go from an S1 tariff to an S5, we're down to thirty-nine thousand dollars. And then if we actually replace the LED fixtures, we're down to seventeen thousand dollars a year. So there's an operating cost savings annually by going from the S1 to an S5 with LEDs. So the program that we're looking at would bear some, we're looking to have them bear the entire cost of the retrofit by utilizing these grant funds, the Green Communities designation grant, as well as the MAPC funds for the streetlight retrofit program. So we're going to start looking at the chart that I just distributed. I have this broken down so that on the left, you'll see the party responsible for paying the cost. So I have town, the DOER designation grant, and the DOER MAPC funds. And then the columns across the top are the costs associated with administering the grant, doing some of the things that are required to fall within the MAPC program, like an audit of our existing structures, doing the design. So basically, taking an assessment of the light fixture that's existing, what comparable LED fixture would work in that scenario. And then we come up with an overall design. And then materials and labor. The DOER MAPC grant pays for a third of the materials and labor. So you'll see them contribute to their portion of that cost. And then we're looking to have the balance of those funds paid for out of the Green Communities designation grant. I have a column there called subtotal. We could, we could just go up to that point where we're just going with LEDs under their program, under that subtotal column. And then you'll go down below and you'll see without smart controls, that's a breakdown of how we end up with our grant funds. So our grant is for a hundred and forty-five thousand. Of that, the DOER designation grant would be utilized for a hundred and twenty-one thousand. That leaves us a balance of twenty-four thousand in the grant that we can use next year. We also get a National Grid incentive, a rebate, if you will, for buying energy-efficient equipment. And that's in the order of twenty-seven thousand. So that, according to Gene, that twenty-seven thousand would go into the general fund. So there is some advantage to having smart controls, however. The MAPC program requires that each of these LED fixtures have a plug for what's called a smart control unit. And that smart control unit is estimated in that next column that I show. Each streetlight would have one of these units. They would communicate wirelessly with one another and can be operated remotely. There could be periods of time when we find we might want to lower the intensity of lights throughout the town by a certain percentage for additional cost savings. So we could do those things. You could do it in a certain part of town. So you could control it remotely instead of having someone physically go out there and, you know, manipulate, turn off lights and turn them on. So those controls are, I carried the most expensive scenario. The range on that was unbelievable, which was given to me from MAPC. It was from eighty dollars per smart control to a hundred and fifty. And I carried it for the four hundred and fourteen light fixtures that we have in town. So I carried a hundred and fifty out of four hundred and fourteen, which gives us almost sixty-four thousand for the smart controls. We, I've been talking to CMRPC. We could see a benefit getting closer to that eighty dollars per fixture if we do procurement regionally. You know, we might have some cost savings because I've noticed that when these things are bid on a smaller scale, that's when the price gets up to a hundred and fifty per light. So, so that's a conservative number, just so you know. I expect that number will go down. So that bumps us down to this small chart in the lower right with the smart controls. You'll see the hundred and forty-five grant that we have. The dedicated's a hundred and sixty-six, which leaves us in a deficit of twenty grand. If we wanted to fund it based upon this worst-case scenario, that twenty grand would need town meeting approval. As an option, and I talked with Matt about this briefly, we could maybe reduce the number of smart controls, and we could do that at a later date. Now we're just trying to get a concept going now that the warrant will be open soon. We could reduce the number of smart control units, maybe not put them throughout the town, but only a portion of the town, utilize the full DOER designation grant, and then basically have a balanced account if that's what the board wants to do. We may find also that we could get the price down from that hundred and fifty dollar per smart control down further.
Are there any towns in the same boat looking at this where we could maybe do a.
Within the region. Within the region, yes.
Is that an option to kind of pull our interest together and?
That, that's the goal. And CMRPC is putting that in their packet. I guess they're currently putting together a procurement solicitation on different things. They're gonna put that in as one of them. So, so tonight, what we're looking to get is some direction from you and we're looking to get a couple of votes. The grant application for the designation grant is due this Friday. So I kinda need to get some direction from the board on if we're going with scenario one, without the smart controls. If we're gonna utilize the full green communities grant. Or if we're going to eventually go to town meeting and try and, you know, work with, with the whole project. The whole scenario townwide.
Do we have any idea of how much more savings might be if we go with the smart controls on an annual basis? Is it hard to?
I don't. I know Matt has some experience with that.
So, this is a project I've done before. The smart controls, I've had a chance to think about this since we spoke earlier this evening. Smart controls allow you, for instance, to send out a command that you're gonna dim to thirty percent. In, in the dusk hours. And you save that much energy by doing that. Smart controls give you the benefit of. If the Douglas police are on pursuit of someone in a vehicle that doesn't have a license plate or somebody who's running on foot. You can enhance all the lights in that area to the maximum lumens capacity, the lighting capacity of those fixtures. To give your police officers the best chance to make a positive identification and fight. Now, how often is that gonna happen? So the question for the board is gonna be, is that expense justified based on the added abilities of the lights? I think these things have to be within range of each other to talk. So, a fair number of the town's lights are not gonna be within range of another light for the fixture to actually properly operate. We're, we're really talking about is Route sixteen through the core of town. And perhaps if there's enough connectivity between here and some of the more densely populated subdivisions in town. That's really, it's not gonna be all four hundred and fourteen lights. You consider not to exceed amount and just simply say, we wouldn't go beyond the green communities grant. Cause we want that twenty-seven, two-hundred to come back to the town no matter what. Let's kind of. I look at this number, based on the conversation we just had. Knowing that even though we don't have any shovel-ready, wrench-ready projects other than streetlights to use this designation grant for this year. We do have good solid leads on follow-on projects for next year's round. So we have a competitive round, but we would have some money left over to do some of the work. Which would include upgrading our heating downstairs. We use electric heat in the police department. We really ought to get rid of that and get proper connectivity to our, our new boiler in this building. But we have to scope all that out, bid it all, you know, get a sense of what that's gonna cost. If we had some cash in the till, we would be in a better position. I think the efficiencies in this building this year, just from the windows and the new boiler are fairly clearly demonstrated. Both in terms of the, the money and the happiness of the personnel who have to work here.
Sure.
So, I kinda wanna, I guess I'm edging towards this. I, I think we should probably, unless somebody can tell us they can handle this East Douglas area in the design phase. We, we really should back off the wireless smart control. I just don't know if there's enough value for the town unless the chief of police says. This is the first time you're hearing this conversation if you have a reaction to that. But, I don't know if I wanna spend. But that's sixty-three thousand dollars. If you tell me, we're really almost never gonna be chasing anybody on foot in that part of town.
I was telling Gene, we catch them before they get to that point where we have to turn the lights off.
There you go. See, there's the answer. They make LED flash lights.
Exactly.
In case we don't need any lights at all then.
So I guess kinda where this is going is let's maybe, in the context I was in, it made sense. Tiverton was, had a very densely populated north section and we had over thirteen hundred lights. So the idea of, you know, having all that, that mesh network, in my mind, held future value for the town. Somebody was gonna find a way to hook into that mesh network and do a whole bunch of stuff that we can't imagine today. But if we have lights that don't even talk to each other because they're too far apart, that value can't be realized. So, my thought, my recommendation to the board would be, please do allow us to use the designation community funds for this project. Cause it's ready to go. And let's skip the wireless and not have to go to town meeting for this conversation.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Agreed.
You change your mind in the future, they have to have the plug there.
Plug is there.
Plug, yeah. Go later.
Mr. Chairman, as previously discussed, I have to bow out of this meeting. But I appreciate the opportunity to, we're asking you to move the agenda a little bit so we can have that budget discussion.
Happy to accommodate you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
See you.
Bye, Jim. Alright, so do we have a motion as presented by?
Yeah, I have a motion to approve without the smart controls.
Second. Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion?
Just, just for the record, I will add a little buffer zone of contingency. These numbers didn't carry a contingency, so just for the application, I will.
Please do. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, very welcome.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, in addition to that, we're gonna sign an MOU with the CMRPC as well as MAPC.
So that brings us to Kingwood Estates Donation Agreement Amendment.
In your packet, you have a copy of a donation agreement. This is a remnant of a subdivision bond that was in place. And the, the developer, the, the company that was in business had, had been dissolved. We were looking, we had the roadway accepted. We were looking to return funds. We didn't have an entity really to return it to, but the individual was still accessible. Who was president and owner of the company. He, uh, he's been very forthright in working with the town. He's entered into this agreement voluntarily, which basically says we could utilize the residual bond money to make improvements to the roadway. Over the, over three-year increments until we expend the account. Highway has utilized that, those funds over the period. And, um, now we're at a point where we're gonna, we're, we wanna close out the project. There's some peripheral work that we want done for parcels that aren't within the roadway. We're actually targeting town meeting to have these taken for the town. So it's technically not as defined in the original agreement. So we're looking to amend the agreement to allow us to utilize these funds to do title work, basically is what we want on these two parcels within the project. That are owned by that same entity. We wanna put them on the warrant for town meeting to take them for the town. And, uh, town council prepared this amendment, Land Use Council. And, uh, and, um, so basically we have this before us. The owner, the, the developer is aware of how we wanna utilize the funds. He's fine with it, so it's fairly procedural. We plan on having you sign it, then the planning board and then the developer.
I have a lawyer, you tell me.
What about the town's lawyer?
It's your A-lawyer.
I'm A-lawyer.
I think it's your Q.
But I'm like, your lawyer.
Our lawyer's playing Sudoku over there. I don't know what he's doing.
Well, I don't know what he's doing. I can see.
He knows. He knows what I'm doing.
Do you have any thoughts on it?
It's good to go.
Good to go?
That's all we need to hear.
That's all I needed to hear as well.
So, since we all heard that, I move that we approve the Kingwood Estates Donation Agreement Amendment as presented.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Alright, so now the next is to approve the Selectman's annual report.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill, and possible votes. Alright, where is our said annual report for approval?
It's in your paragraph.
First, uh, paragraph says fiscal year two thousand seventeen.
Would you like me to read the report? Is that what we're at?
I typed it, so it wasn't twenty-twelve.
I thought it looked great.
It does look good.
I have no issues with it.
Would you like me to read it?
It's necessary for you to read it.
I'd like to read it. I feel like reading you guys a nice little story this evening. How do you feel about that?
It's gonna be in the annual report.
You know, so the point is, people will have an opportunity to read it for themselves.
Fine then, fine then. Have it your way. I won't read to you. Vote ahead with no dessert tonight, Mr. Hughes. Can I borrow your pen? So do I hear a motion to approve the Selectman's annual report?
So moved.
Second. We've never actually approved one before, have we?
No, we have a new boss. He can do what he wants.
I can't, putting anything out there is yours unless you say it to us.
I'm just making a point we've never approved of.
Yeah.
You've been babied in the past.
Make the motion.
Coddled as well.
I seconded it. He made it.
Alright, made by Dave, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
I was impressed that he was asking you to approve it.
Yes.
No, okay.
I was impressed that he was asking you to approve it.
No, I was just saying, I was, I have my contact, Mr. Jimmy.
I like this pen. You may have it back. Alright, so this brings us to the meeting minutes for February sixth, two thousand eighteen, and the February sixth, two thousand eighteen executive session minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve February sixth, regular meeting minutes.
I will second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. All those in favor? Aye.
And I'll also make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes on the same day.
Do we wanna retain them?
I believe we're retaining them all.
Second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Wojcicki, this brings us to your administrator's report. Which we stole a lot of your thunder by going through the budget, I'm sure.
Yep. Uh, recently, as many members of the board are aware, and I think many folks in the public are aware. There was a chimney fire that spread to a home in Pasco, not really Pasco there, I get confused with.
Boroughville.
It was Harrisville, well, it's called Boroughville, but safer, on the Boroughville Douglas line. And, uh, unfortunately, a set of circumstances arose where our help was desperately needed. And it came over our radio channel and I'm proud of our guys. They're, obviously, they're married to their radios. But they were in a position because they heard the call for assistance. There was a call for a command officer and an engine. They were able to respond immediately when they arrived on scene with several Douglas firefighters. Two engines and a command car with Deputy Chief Furno, cause our chief was at the Fire Marshal's office dealing with an appeal. They found that a Pasco firefighter, Lieutenant Jenks, had collapsed after being exposed to smoke and he subsequently passed away. So, um, I don't think I'm stepping out of line to say on behalf of the whole town, our condolences to the Jenks family. Our best wishes to the Pasco Fire Department. And a reaffirmation of the fact that our firefighters and our fire department will always be there when needed. And we're proud to have worked hand in hand with Pasco to stop that fire in that house. During the past couple of weeks, we are in that period of the year, I think everybody knows it, as they walked in tonight, we were almost sixty degrees out. How long ago was it that we were talking about negative?
Ten.
Ten-degree wind chills.
It's not gone yet, Toby.
Those kinds of weather conditions wreak havoc on unpaved roads. And we've had quite a few complaints about, um, conditions on private ways. Where, you know, the gravel, dirt roads. And I think in the past, the town got into the habit of running out and trying to fix things up and people got used to that. That was a, a normal course of business and there's nothing wrong with that, but on one level. Because it de-escalates the situation, gets a fix and people are happy. But, private ways are private. And the town exposes itself to unnec- unnecessary levels of risk at a time when we can't afford to do that. Our claims ratio, our loss ratio, if you will, on our property and casualty insurance for the town is one hundred and thirty-two percent. It is not a responsible activity for the town to run out and fix private ways when we are constantly at risk of having to file additional claims or, or creating a, a risk situation. Uh, we did consult with council who advised that we really shouldn't be active on private ways. But I wanna assure people that there is a mechanism in the law for residents who live on a private way to get assistance. There are two things that we can do. One is, we have to keep the roads open for emergency vehicles to pass and repass. Uh, that's a fundamental commitment of the town with twenty-four-seven coverage. Is that, you know, if you call for help, we'll be able to get an ambulance or a fire engine to your house. So, on a couple of occasions, we have sent out crews to dump gravel and bring a backup out and bust up some ice. Just to keep the road passable. Doesn't mean it's gonna be comfortable. Doesn't mean that a smaller car like a Prius or, or anything else is gonna be able to navigate it very easily. But that's the edge of the town's obligation. But there is a mechanism to petition town meeting for a discreet repair. And to have the bill for that repair parceled out amongst the owners along that private way. Pro-rata basis, based on their frontage on the road. That's the proper way to proceed. So where there have been incidents where that is necessary, we know something fundamentally is wrong with the road. We've been sending out mail to those residents on that street, said this is how you properly proceed. This is what a resolution would look like and this is how it will work. I've gone a little bit above and beyond, trying to reach a major landowner in Texas who owns large stretches of land along Arden Street and Perry. To see if he'll acquiesce for what I would consider to be a minor repair with a major impact. You know, there's a place where a culvert is blocked, seasonal water flow is overflowing and washing out the roadway. And there's, that's just, can't be fixed in the middle of the ice season, by the way. But really, we're talking about a culvert. Our guys do this kind of work all the time. And it would, because he's the major owner of almost all the frontage, it would be primarily his responsibility to come up with that. I'm hoping he acquiesces, but in addition to the mailing, we sent certified mail to that owner directly. One other situation has arisen. Oddly enough, the roadway in question is a state road. I'm talking about Ridge Trail. That runs along the Whitein Reservoir and there are quite a few homes up to the point where the road is blocked off with a gateway and there's a small parking lot there. The road has become very difficult. Once again, we will make it passable. But, I've reached out on the town's behalf to, once again, our state rep. Let's try to get a conversation with MassDOT. And the conversation should be, I would recommend something like this. That they would bring the road up to a paved standard that was acceptable within the footprint of the existing road. And then frankly, because they will never do it again, we just take it.
Right.
As a town road and put this to bed forever. But I want them to bear the cost of the engineering and the environmental compliance because they're close to the reservoir. We, we don't have the resources for that. They would have to do that, but they get the road off their books. I think there should be an agreement there somewhere. So those conversations have been suggested and requested and waiting to hear back from the state authorities. But, that's kinda where we stand with public and, and private ways. Lastly.
I have a question.
Yes.
The mechanism, if you wanna do an improvement, is it by street and you need a consent of X percent of the butters?
Yes.
It's a majority.
Majority.
And is the town lay out the money and then get reimbursed, reimbursed through a betterment, or how does that work?
That's it.
Yeah.
So how do they determine the majority? Is it, I mean, in theory, the person holding the largest?
Stakeholders.
So if this guy from Texas said is the major stakeholder for this road frontage, says absolutely not, I think his no would probably count more than ten or fifteen yeses.
There's two, I'll tell you, there's two things that happen. Step one is the petition for assistance.
Yeah.
And that goes by a majority of the estate holders.
Such as a, such as a gross number.
Okay.
Now, in this particular case, the major landholder, there are several different lots. And he and his L L C own them, so he has forty-eight percent of the vote. Right? But when it comes to divvying up the cost, it's done by frontage. So he would have the vast majority of the frontage.
So he's got forty-eight percent of the vote, but he's probably also got forty-eight percent of the cost.
I would say probably closer to seventy, seventy-five percent of the cost.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
What is our position or what is the procedure if a majority of residents on a private way? And I think we throw Ridge Trail out of this because it's a state road, petition the town to accept that road as a public way.
I think that comes to you as the road commissioner, so.
Yeah. They would petition for a layout of the way. You would open a hearing. You'd refer to the planning board for their recommendations. They would then report back to you with some opinion as to what would be needed in order to bring it up to a proper standard. Based on that information, you would or would not take a vote to lay the road out. Your report and vote would be filed with the town clerk at least seven days before town meeting. And then town meeting would vote to accept your layout. It's, sometimes people think town meeting is voting to lay the road out. No, they're voting to accept your layout. And then if it was a subdivision road, it's a simple majority vote because there's a presumption that it's been through the planning board process and is gonna be in a better condition. If it's a straightforward roadway, it's a two-thirds vote.
Thank you for that remarkably detailed answer to my question. I was, I was only hoping for something very general, but thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
You asked him for the time.
Well, I, I got my answer.
So much for Sudoku.
So I have one more piece to my report of that conversation.
Absolutely.
On your March sixth agenda, there will be suggested a discussion regarding cannabis and cannabis grow facility here in town. There's been a request to consider the impact that the recreational vote has had on the business prospects and necessarily the host community agreement. So I'll be bringing that in front of you with some more analysis. All I've had is the initial meeting, just to hear the person out. You'll note in the budget spreadsheet that I sent to you that I do factor in the revenue that's projected from the grow facility beginning in twenty twenty, fiscal twenty twenty. Just because that seems to be the timeframe we're on. I never thought I'd hear myself say this because I have, I think I'm one of the only people I know who's never even tried the stuff. So it's not an industry. It's not an industry. No, I didn't even put it to my lips, but it's a fascinating industry. And the trend, the things that have happened to it, as it has grown in Colorado and Oregon particularly, should help the Commonwealth of Massachusetts make good choices about how it regulates the industry and how it interacts with the people who own the businesses. So I would encourage, I'm gonna send you a couple of very brief articles. But basically, what's happened is those grow facilities that, first of all, move, well, we all know first mover advantage. That's common understanding of business world. But those that move quickly in the volume business, grab market share, and the price drops. So only the most well-capitalized initial movers survive. But they're in the recreational market, but the profit potential, the social benefit potential is still in the medicinal grow and the highly refined secondary compounds that come out of the marijuana plant. So it's a very interesting industry as it has developed, and, and how do you wanna manage this relationship with what could be one of the largest businesses in town in very short order? So I'll be bringing that to you on March sixth. That's your, that's your preview. And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
So I think, kind of to parlay off of that, I think it would make sense for us to start looking into like an exploratory committee to work with zoning in the event that recreational does make its way into Douglas, based off of the will of the residents and the board.
Yeah, there's, there's really two facets to the issue. One is the grow.
Yep.
What is an acceptable activity in the grow facility? And the completely different question
Retail.
is the retail dispensaries.
Okay. So do we have any old business? Any new business? Seeing none. Looking for one of the usual bone. And actually, you did it last time.
I'll make a motion that we.
Mr. Chairman, before, can I just interrupt Mr. Hughes for a second, and I might need counsel. I came into possession of information just around five o'clock this afternoon, that I would like to discuss with the board in executive session regarding a personnel matter. Should I withhold that, or can we do that this evening?
How pressing is it?
It's pressing.
I think what you ought to do is declare that it's an emergency, if it is in fact an emergency.
No, I wouldn't say it's an emergency.
How about if it's of high importance?
Well, the open meeting law is pretty strict. It, it, you know, back before you had to identify matters on your agenda, there was a lot of flexibility. But now that you do have to identify matters, there's a presumption that you're only gonna be talking about what's shown. And if it's not shown, there really has to be some emergency reason for bringing it up.
Wouldn't possibly be injurious to the town if we waited to the next meeting? That's the question I would say.
Well, that, that's part of an emergency.
Except that I think that under the act, as more or less your personnel director, I have tools at my disposal that I could do to prevent injury to the town.
You'd be seeking advice.
Yeah, I was, I wanted the board to be aware of the status, but maybe March sixth might be the best time.
Okay.
Sorry.
We have to serve matters too.
Don't have to apologize to the legislature. All right, so I'm, I'm making a motion that we enter into executive session for the purposes to discuss real property. And to leave executive session for the purposes of adjournment.
Second. Made by Mike. Seconded by Dave. Vocal.
My cue, Zach.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Hal Davis, aye.
David Cortez, aye.